All right.
Do you have to get out of test mode?
I think I have.
Okay.
Yep. So this is the November nine meeting of the Grotton Planning and Zoning Commission. Jeff, Richard is the chair, staff tonight, Deb Jones and Bruce Lofgren. Members of the public who want to address the commission need to do that under public communications. And you will need to raise your virtual hand to do that on an Apple device. You can find that hovering at the top of your screen on a PC at the bottom. If you're on the phone, it is star nine.
Okay, so I'll call the Planning and zoning commission meeting to order. First item is roll call. And it looks like everybody's here, regular members are all present and alternates, we have Kevin and Steve is not present. Perhaps. Okay, the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meetings now make a motion to approve the minutes of October 26. Is there a second?
Second.
I would second that someone else.
Moved and seconded. Does anyone have any corrections?
I had one, just if it could be made clearer, but I don't know what it is. Oh, boy. Yeah, I'm all. Sorry.
Then anyone else have any corrections? Just had a couple. Under new business on the very first paragraph. It starts off with a historic statement in that who identified it. And really, the minute should be identifying in what people are presenting. And I think the way around that is on the second sentence. In that paragraph, it's on X one on page four. Or page two of the of the minutes where it starts staff reviewed the role of the planning. And zoning commission has in permitting that that sentence should be moved as the first sentence in that in that paragraph. So so it starts off with who's speaking.
Okay.
So and
Yeah, I'll just let it go. It wasn't like it was so critical.
Can't find it yet on page.
I was looking at it online and then I meant to make a note of it.
That's why I always do it in writing with a red pen. On page three, at the very top of the page, at the end of that paragraph, it sort of is incomplete. What it's saying is staff will take information gathered from the commission to draft regulations for cannabis establishments. I think there should be an action for that that would say to be presented or to be submitted to the commission for review as to what happens with those.
Which is this now?
On page three.
Yeah.
The very top paragraph, which actually starts on.
Yes, yeah, now this is where I was. This is where I was.
Very last sentence.
Okay.
Indicates that the the staff will prepare regulations, but it doesn't say what happens to them. And I think.
No doubt. And then I.
Say it will be to be submitted to.
And my, my question regarded that top of that same where it says discussion was had as the need for the requirement of a special permit application to be filed along with the site plan for each cannabis establishment. And if we could just like put in another something that says that makes it more clear as to beyond just discussion or did we decide that there should be a special permit?
Well, there were no votes taken. Oh, you mean? Yeah.
What was the result of that conversation or what?
Yeah.
Was there? We described, we had a discussion about the need.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have my notes with me, so I can't answer that. Okay.
I mean, I didn't go back and look at the tape of it, but.
Yeah, probably. I don't remember what that.
Anyway, I'm just gonna leave it at that. Deb, if you.
Yeah, there was a decision on that.
You just discussed it.
No consensus. Review the tape.
Okay.
Yep.
Give you more work, but thank you.
Okay.
And on pay on that same page. And it's sort of in the middle on the report of chair in that middle paragraph. The last sentence there is kind of spelling error says the is no litigation at this point.
Yep.
I think that's there is no, I think was what was stated. Does anyone have any corrections? There are none, then we'll vote on the motion to prove the minutes as amended, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion is carried unanimously. Next item is public communications. Does anyone on the commission have any communications? I don't know if you wanted to bring up your item, Mike.
Well, I did attend the the town council meeting. And there were plenty of public community on November 3rd. It was a public hearing regarding the short term rentals. And do you want me to launch into this now or do you want to do it?
Why don't you say, save it?
Yeah, I mean, I've got quite a bit of things that I would like to address, but I did attend that. And there were plenty of public comments regard to that. And I would think it would behoove everyone to watch that testimony. Thank you.
I guess I was, this is Sue, I was also there and I echo Michael's comments. I think it's well worth listening to, particularly the public comment section. It was quite illuminated and went on some length. And I'd also like to talk a little bit about that later on.
Yeah, I think it's. Yeah. Discussion. Does anyone have anything else? Is staff have anything on communications?
I'll just note, many of you probably saw that Susan Sayer passed away. She was a zoning commissioner. A really effective zoning commissioner. At any rate, we will have, we'll have a card for her. If you all want to stop by, we'll have it available next Monday.
Yeah, I just want to add to that. I think she was a key member for many years, poll commissioner. She used to sit next to Doug and I thought, I thought we were really fortunate to have a terrific collegial group similar to what P and Z is now. They were saying, but she was terrific, very bright and with her education, you know, from Cornell and planning, she, she was such a valuable resource. And a dear person will miss her very much.
Does anyone in the public wish to address us tonight?
Yeah, got a couple of hands raised. Let's Peter Fine. You can unmute yourself. Mr. Fine.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I raised my hand accidentally. I apologize.
Okay, then. All right, let's see. Tom O'Farrell.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Tom O'Farrell. I live on Brookhaven Road along with my wife. And last meeting, there was a mention of a new proposal for a car wash on Long Hill Road and Brookhaven Road. I'm not sure if tonight's the night to speak about that, but I would like to state a few thoughts on that. And we're in opposition to development of a car wash in that, that zoning, it's CN. It seems like it's more appropriate for CR where CR is meant to accommodate heavier commercial uses such as auto oriented operations. CN, while I won't read the whole regulation mentions neighborhood serving retail, smooth transitions. Preferred emphasis on pedestrian connection connections and green space. And a car wash is pretty much the exact opposite, opposite of that. It would be an attempt to drive as much motor vehicle traffic there as possible. And I haven't seen anything as to the hours of operations, but the goal would be to get more vehicle traffic there. We also don't really believe it would be a good buffer to the neighborhood. In fact, parts of it would butt up right on Brookhaven Road. And one of them would houses, I believe it's 126 Brookhaven Road. They would be 12 feet away from the property line. There's also other items that we would be concerned about, light and noise pollution, diminished property values. And honestly, I don't see the need. There's three car washes within a mile and a half of the property. And one of the big concerns we have is if you put something like that in that lot. And we're not opposed to development there, you know, obviously you want people to be successful and do what they need to do. As long as it fits in the zoning intent, but I would, my wife and I would be concerned that it would set a precedent to encourage a similar development on other lots that would be nearby. In fact, you may remember in May, there, I think it was in May, there was a pretty very inappropriate attempt to put a huge nearly block long car wash, gas station, convenience store with a three foot, 30 foot down to three foot property line variance requested for. And I understand it's the same company Noble that's trying to do the car wash. And I would be concerned that if that's approved, there may be an attempt to take the three lots on by Mr. Hulk. And if I pronounce his name correctly, out of Waterford to maybe piecemeal it in instead of trying to put something that size in that scope. So that's all I wanted to say about that. And thank you for the opportunity.
You may want to come and speak when it's on the agenda. The application gets on the agenda.
Okay.
Right.
Anyone else?
See Beth Tillman.
Good evening, commissioners. Always a pleasure to be able to speak with you. I wanted to commend you on what I perceive as an excellent job that you are doing. I have been impressed very, very much with the way in which you handle business and the breadth of knowledge that you have in the zoning regulations. I would again ask you when things come before you to make certain that the zoning regulations are enforced as they need to be so that people such as the gentleman who just spoke are not surprised when things go in that are not in keeping with the neighborhood. As you know, I am a person opposed to the oral school development as it may or may not go forward. That of course is an unknown. And I feel that zoning is in many ways a contract with those of us who are citizens and live in areas where we purchased our homes and our properties relying on the zoning regulations, relying on the these zones that are surrounding us. So when these change radically or are contemplated for radical change, it becomes very, very, very difficult for those who have invested. Oftentimes their life savings into their home and their properties. So again, I just would like to commend you on what I perceive as exceptional work that you do. And is there an opportunity to speak at the short term rental timeframe? That's not a public hearing, I didn't think. No.
It's not.
Okay, so then I would like to say that from my reading of the zoning regulations and my understanding from all of the people who spoke at the town council meeting, the zoning regulations are quite clear that short term rentals are not permitted in the town of Grotton. And I would ask that the commission find a way to enforce the rules that are on the books so that again, we don't have a taking of people's quiet enjoyment of their properties by having something that is commercial next door to them, which is an extreme violation. I do know that it took a very long time for the Spicer Mansion to be brought into line. When they first had their permits approved, it was that the dining rooms were to be open only to guests within the hotel. And they remained in violation of that for, I think, on the order of five or six years before finally they had been brought into line. So it would be extremely detrimental to the character of residential neighbors, neighborhoods to allow things like that to go on. Thank you again for all your work. Good evening.
Thank you. Let's see. Susan Griffin, I think. There we go. You're muted.
There you go. Thank you. My name is Sue Griffin and I'm a resident of 74 Cow Hill Road Mystic, Connecticut with my husband, Paul Griffin. And again, I am not sure if this is a time I can speak on the short term rentals. But I would like to say that I do appreciate everything that the planning and zoning board has done in regards to the work that you do in your, in your group. And I've been on many of your Zoom meetings and appreciate the hard work that you do. But I also would like to speak that that the town does take, the town in the planning and zoning committee does take up this issue of short term rentals as we have been affected by that in a very negative way in our neighborhood. And so I encourage you to do that. And thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you. See. Going to be surf.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
You can. Okay. Hi, my name is Genevieve Surf. I live at six Pearl Street in Mystic. And I'm also here to speak on the subject of the short term rentals. I, I really just found out about this issue not long ago. And when I attempted to, I live right next door actually to a house that has turned into a short term rental paradise on eight Pearl Street. And there was testimony given at a town council meeting that this house at eight Pearl Street is now owned by a corporation somewhere in the Midwest. And then all the work is done by another corporation of cleaning and greeting the guests and transfer the keys and everything. So basically there are two major corporations running this basic hotel next door to where I live. And I found out so much in the last week that it just really defies the imagination. How, you know, the town of Grotton staff has, has, you know, it's kind of like squeezed the whole problem down to this little four page document, which wasn't even in the packet last week for the town of Grotton here, public hearing. And I would like to add my thanks to Beth Tillmans, that you all have been absolutely lifesavers for us, the residents. For as long as you, the, the five of you have been seated, we're incredible, we're incredibly grateful for the really professional and responsible job that you're doing. And I might say rather courageous too, because I feel that the planning staff, people have been in an attempt, I guess, to raise property taxes and the mill rate have been basically selling property and, and uses on the town of Grotton down, absolutely down the river so that we're, we're surrounded by so much development, so many new uses, all this. And it's really hard to attend all the public hearings. So one of the first actually things I was going to ask you to do is change the night of your meetings to Wednesday or Thursday. Because right now there are two really big public hearings going on in the town of Grotton, the town council meeting. One is on property along the Noack shoreline. They're about, you know, there are like dozens of people in the room. They're probably 15 to 20 letters have been written about this. And I right now can't go listen to that because I'm over here, you know, begging you to do something. Take over the short term rental problem. It requires a lot of study, not just a couple of minutes of staff writing up four pages. We have absolutely no teeth. And we're really so dependent on you to save us because evidently there's already 169 of these Airbnb rentals in Grotton. They're completely unregulated. And as the internet has unfortunately, and I'm an IT person, I have been since 1970. I helped, it helped create this crazy internet and I really regret that I do because you know, just like Facebook, Airbnb and whatever the other ones are, have arisen to be these behemoths on the internet and all this stuff created by young kids who really don't have very much of an idea of what a societal responsibility is. And you don't mind inviting invading people's neighborhoods, you know, basically buying up houses just for the really a commercial purpose of lodging people. And there has been no time to regulate these things. You don't really know how to approach it because it's one of these internet beasts. It's like Facebook, you know, the even at the federal level, they don't really know how to regulate them. So this is a really thorny problem. I know that you all are capable of doing this, but I would urge you to, and we will be behind you 100% to take all the time that you need to do it. It will not be done in five minutes. It won't be done by just you're taking those silly four pages that have no teeth and don't regulate a thing and, and basically changing a few words and handing it back to the town to vote on. I really would like to, I have some documents I'd like to send you. There was, there's a large document about what happened in Phoenix, Arizona because of this and it's extremely well written. And it says the unintended consequences of this unregulated Airbnb business are, have been absolutely terrible for the town. So I know you're very responsible. I'm trusting that, that, that you will be given the time and the latitude to do what you have to do to protect us, the residents. And you know, I'm not going to start on all the things, the violations, just the assessments. For instance, you know, this house next door to me is basically a hotel in a residential neighborhood, which in your zoning regs says, you know, they can't be in residential neighborhoods. That's just for starters. Never mind the fact that they're assessed like a regular residence and they're making thousands of dollars a year, which, you know, from an income perspective, if they were a commercial establishment, they would be taxed and assessed in a completely different way. There's so many things to consider and I'm not going to bend your ear, but I'm sure you've kind of gotten an idea about how complex it is. But I would urge, urge you to ask for a moratorium on any further applications for these rental, whatever they are, properties, Airbnb properties and an enforcement of your zoning regs. In other words, no hotel motel such as a house next door to me in a residential neighborhood. And then for you to be able to take a long, hard look, read everything you have to read. I'm going to send you some of the stuff I found on the internet, just the state of Connecticut has like a 150, 200 page document on the thing. And we in the town of Grotton have never heard of this, you know, because all of a sudden we can just come out with four pages, you know, of, of regulations which have no teeth. So, you know, I won't go on, but I'm, and I'm, I am, I am really concerned about it. And I'm really hopeful that you get to time and the latitude to do what you feel you need to do to protect us residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see, Mary Ellen Furlong.
Good evening and thank you all again. You deserve our congratulations. And as far as this Airbnb business, I served very briefly, very briefly indeed, as an alternate in Noack on their zoning commission. They spent years trying to regulate this because it will change the character completely of that small area of Grotton. Airbnb makes it sound small and innocuous. You can rent a spare bedroom or maybe even your whole house for a weekend. But it's not small and innocuous. Their, their business is now far larger than the Marriott and Hilton hotels chains combined. They have many investors and LLCs buying up houses with the sole intent of turning them into Airbnbs. And they prefer them in residential areas because they don't have to pay commercial taxes. It, this completely changes neighborhoods, destroys them. I have been looking at this for years. I, the first time I saw it, I was quite shocked to learn that the city of Reykjavik in Iceland had to erect temporary housing for its own citizens because they could no longer find a place to rent. Reykjavik has become so popular, Airbnbs had taken everything over. I would hate to see that happen in Mystic. It's already being difficult, let us say, for many people here. But many of us don't go down into downtown Mystic during the summer. It's almost impossible. But I really feel, and having, having seen what went on in Noack, having seen this on Cape Cod where I used to go and Nantucket, I think they've been debating it for about four years so far with no avail, trying to pass rules. I would like really to see zoning take this on. This is not a matter for the town council. How it ever got there, I do not know. But we need strong and enforceable zoning regulations. If there is no enforcement, there's no rules. And I hope that you all get the chance to do this. It will take a long time. It is so complicated. But if we want to recognize this place as Grotton, Mystic, Noack, Grotton, Long Point, anywhere, we won't recognize it if we don't do this. In five years, the place will be Airbnb to pieces. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see.
Hello? Good evening.
Go ahead.
Oh, my name is Tom Bradham. I'm sorry. I wasn't sure.
Okay.
My name is Tom Bradham. I live at seven gravel street in Mystic. And I, I don't have any prepared remarks. I made some hopefully cogent remarks at the town council public hearing on short term rentals, which I was glad to see two commissioners attend and voice their personal opinions. As to how this matter got to the town council in the first place, I and, and some of my neighbors and friends may have been responsible for that. Because back in 2018, I filed a complaint orally with the former zoning enforcement officer about transient lodging in the Mystic neighborhoods where I live on gravel. where I live on gravel Pearl Street, Grove Avenue, et cetera. And unfortunately, I was, nothing came of it. I was basically summarily dismissed. In twenty nineteen, I made a more formal complaint with my neighbor to the current zoning enforcement officer about transient lodging and how it was a violation of, it was not a permitted use because it was residential lodging and residents RS and R zones. Some of you who were on the commission at that time actually received correspondence from me and my neighbor sent to you detailing the complaint. And that was in twenty nineteen, October. And that was also just dismissed out of hand with the comment that property owners can rent to whoever they want. And I think the point was being missed. So not having any luck with going to zoning enforcement and trying to get some discussion suing with the commission about transient lodging and more or less hotels and residential neighborhoods, I went to the town council in early twenty twenty. And I and a group of people from Eastern Point, Allen Street in Mystic and others presented in front of the town council at a work group meeting, and the town council and Mayor Granatowski formed a working group on short-term rentals. I was a member of that group along with the mayor, the city of Groton Mayor. Groton Long Point was represented, the Noang zoning commission was represented. We invited in speakers from throughout the community who had vested interest one way or another in their neighborhoods or in their own short-term rental operations. And we interviewed lots of people and did lots of research, and I have a lot of data I can share with you about it, including dozens of other towns and cities and their ordinances. And then it moved from the council committee of the whole to the full council for discussion. And I can tell you that the ordinance that resulted and went to public hearing is one of the worst poorly crafted ordinances on short-term rentals I've ever read in my life. And I think once the director of planning and development and the town attorney became involved, it just disintegrated and went from a photocopy of the ledger ordinance on short-term rentals to what you had presented to the public at the public hearing. No teeth, no enforcement. It was allowing people to put their name on a list and open temporary transient lodging in residential neighborhoods. So it was sorely disappointing. And I think the, I, I urge you to watch the, the YouTube video of the public hearing on short-term rentals. I think the, the ordinance was tabled by the current council, sent back to committee, and I think it will be up to the new council to take it up if they choose to and move forward with an ordinance. I personally think it's a zoning issue, and there is transient lodging. It, it's funny because two people who are with you tonight, Susan Griffin from Cowhill Road whom I've never met, Genevieve Surif from six Pearl Street I've never met. But I was the person who commented at the hearing about eight Pearl Street, because eight Pearl Street is owned by an LLC. The Cowhill Road, short-term rental, she may be complaining about Susan Griffin, that's owned by another LLC, but both of those LLCs are owned by a corporation called Have a Buck Capital Group, which is an asset investment firm out of the Bronx, New York. And on their website, they boast of owning thousands of apartments from Mystic, Connecticut to Norwich, Connecticut to Hartford, Connecticut, where they have some HUD housing, all the way to Steubenville, Ohio. So they got into the short-term rental business because it was so, how can I say, it was so extraordinarily enhancing their bottom lines that they started buying properties on Pearl Street and Cowhill Road and in Preston to basically, I know on eight Pearl Street, the property was bought for twice its appraised value, and two weeks later it became transient lodging. And it's similar to a property at nine gravel street that was the issue of my zoning complaint, which is owned by yet another corporation, which is owned by another corporation, which has short-term rentals from Fairfield to Newport. And since we share a driveway, I, my neighbors know that in the last two years, over twelve hundred guests have stayed in this short-term rental lodging and come up my driveway. We basically are watching, I can see from my house about twelve short-term rentals just in downtown historic Mystic. And these are whole houses that have been converted into frankly pseudo-hotels. And they're operated with virtual check-ins, just like I do when I travel to, to Washington to stay at a, at a Marriott or a Hilton. They have virtual check-ins, virtual checkout. Their rooms are not cleaned every day, but neither is my room during the pandemic as I travel for business. So essentially, we're watching transient operations in what are considered an area, a zoning district where residential lodging is not permitted. I wasn't even planning to speak tonight, but I had to bring up the, the coincidence between Cowhill Road and Pearl Street. So thank you for listening to me as I made that connection for you all. And I, I really do encourage the zoning commission to take this on and, and basically consider just, I don't think you need to write new regulations and short-term rental regulations. I think it's very clear that residential lodging, which is transient lodging, is not permitted in residential districts within the town of Groton. I think that you just need to direct town staff to enforce these regulations. That is my point of view. Thank you kindly.
Very good. Thank you. I do not see any other hands.
Let's move on then. No special permits, no subdivisions. We have two site plans. First one is SIT twenty-one sixteen. Cardinal Honda modification, five thirty-one, route twelve.
Yeah, Clint Brown is here. I saw him earlier. I want to promote him.
Yes, he's promoted now. Is he there? Clint, do you want us make your presentation? Is he muted or?
No, he, he's promoted. I'm not sure.
Not muted.
Yeah.
I see Seamus Moran is also here. I don't know if he's part of this application.
Amos is the next one.
Okay.
There we go.
He's connecting here.
You're muted, Clint. There goes.
Seems like Clint's having some difficulty. Done muting himself and then muting himself, so. Not sure. The other applicants are here. I tried to promote them as well, but I don't think they accepted it. Kim Cardinal is here too. Let me see if I can allow her to talk.
Hi Bruce, this is Marty Witkowski.
Yes, hi Marty. We can hear you. Yes.
Yeah, good. Kim is not here. She's on vacation in France right now. So I'm here in her place. I know Clint is here somewhere, supposed to be.
Well, Clint, speak.
I don't see his name up here anymore.
Yeah, his name's up and he's got his hand up, but he's not speaking.
We don't, we don't weigh with Clint.
If I could just give a little technical advice. If our Clint, what I would do is I would sign off and come back in just through your browser. You don't have to have Zoom loaded, but just sign out and come back in through the browser and then click on your audio and visual, video, and I think you're going to get back in Clint.
Looks like you heard that.
So I hear the town of Groton is doing away with mask mandates tomorrow.
Are they?
That's right.
Make it a little less confusing downtown.
Yeah. Then Bruce, I think you're going to have to promote him again when he comes back. I'm just saying.
Yeah, here he comes.
Yeah.
And he's muted.
And so, yeah, I, I can go ahead and, and share the plan and okay, and do some of the presentation, and hopefully Clint can figure it out.
Right. And probably just one little hint, probably his mic is off. His, his mic is off on his PC. That's what I would say. That's right.
Maybe he's got a piece of tape over the mic.
That's just the video, Michael, but.
Oh, that was what I did.
Right. That's what you should do.
That's so you can eat.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right, here we go. Seamus Moran works with Clint. He has his hand raised, so maybe, maybe Seamus can do the presentation to Clint. Let me see.
He's muted.
Hey Bruce, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Seamus.
Okay, excellent. So it sounds like Clint is having some technical difficulties. I am driving right now, so I can't pull up a plan. I had another, I had a conflict. But if it's okay with you Bruce, would you pull up the plan for me? I can kind of go through what, what the plan is before you while Clint tries to figure out his mic.
Sure. Yeah, let me, let me share screen. I'll let you know when the plan is up. Okay, so the plan is on the screen, Seamus, if you just want to go over the puzzle here. I, I can fill in anything you can, because it's in front of me.
Yeah, sure. Let, let me try and get started here then. So, so we were before you about a year and a half or two years ago for an expansion of the building and some parking improvements at the Cardinal Honda site. Kim and Marty can speak to this as well, but they, they want to tone down the amount of paved parking on their site, at least upfront. So what we're thinking about doing is phasing the construction. What they'd like to do is take the approved plan, what was approved two years ago, and phase it. And phase one will be a construction of a, I think it's about fifty by a hundred and fifty foot pavement area in the southeast corner of development, which is the lower left-hand corner. And then phase, and also some associated stormwater management improvements associated with that. Phase two would be to complete the full development, which is the approved plan from two years ago, which is what you see before you. There's a larger area, paved area in the center of the site that they, they don't feel the need to do right now, that they would like to do in the future as part of a phase two of the development. And to take that area in the southeast corner and reduce the amount of pavement down there slightly as well. So go from the, the larger approved phase two area and only construct the, I think it's fifty foot by a hundred and fifty foot paved area in that corner. So it's, it's really taking what was approved two years ago and phasing it rather than constructing it all upfront. The, the area of revegetation will be the same as what was approved back two years ago. And we'll keep that as it was approved. We won't modify that. And the vehicle display areas will be the same as what was approved before. We'll just, based on how the phasing is, the vehicles will only be displayed either on the pavement or in the area that was previously proved, not on the pavement. So that's really the extent of it. I'm not sure if there's any questions or if I'm missing something, I apologize. But Bruce, if you want to, if you want to take it from here, Clint just tried to call my cell phone. It sounds like he might be having some technical difficulties. So I, I don't know if there's something I can help you with here, Bruce, or if there's something you can chime in on. Or, or I'm sorry, if the commission has any, any questions on it, I know it was, it was brief, but
Yeah, it's that simple. Bruce, do you have input on your presentation for the presentation?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Bruce Lofgren here, Office of Planning and Development Services. It, it really is pretty much that simple that, that Seamus just described it. So most of you may remember that we had, we approved this in twenty nineteen as this plan right here. So, you know, I don't want to go over the whole phasing plan again, but essentially what, what happened was not all the paving that was proposed in twenty nineteen was completed. And they wished to not pave everything and pave it again, or, or finish the paving in phase two. So, you know, right, right now we have, you know, the revegetation area over here. That's all staying the same. There's a little bit of paving down here. And the vehicle display area will be in this area. The phase two paving will add in this area right here that was previously approved and also expand the paving in the southeast portion here. The stormwater system that's in place now is designed to mitigate the existing paved area. When phase two is completed, the stormwater system will be upgraded to address the additional increase in in, in the paved area. So it's designed to be increased to meet the standards of the WRPD. One thing I did want to point out to the commission is you recall in twenty nineteen, we placed a condition on the approval that stated that there can't be any parking, storage of vehicles, display of vehicles within the revegetation area. And part of that condition, we, we said that, or you, you said that you would like to see some type of permanent identifiable marker along the edge of the revegetation area. I worked with the applicant back in twenty nineteen. Um, I worked with the applicant back in twenty nineteen to come up with a, um, uh, in, in acceptable type of marker. It was kind of a nautical fence type thing where, um, you know, it was maybe four by four, six by six posts with some nautical rope in between. Um, the applicant now is proposing a three-inch tall landscape timber along the area. So the purpose was to, to, for it to be, you know, visible and identifiable to, um, to, um, you know, on site and people driving by to know where and where not the revegetation area is. So I did want to, um, ask the commission for any input they may have on that, and, um, that, that's, that's pretty much the, the extent of, of this phasing plan here.
Turn it over to commissioners if they have any, uh, questions or input. Uh, start with you Mike.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, uh, I mean, it doesn't seem like, it, it doesn't seem like it's an issue to me. Uh, I just want to make, this is in the WRPD, I believe. Uh, and I want to just make sure that, like, uh, you know, the, during construction, obviously, that all the hay bales or whatever needs to be done, because we're doing it in a different way now. And then Bruce, did you say a three-inch high fence?
Uh, three inches tall, um, landscape timber, so a railroad, a rail, oh, yeah, essentially a wooden curb would act like a curb. Um, I mean, three inches is a little less.
And, and what had, you initially had proposed a, a fence. I think that was our intention. Was to prevent, I mean, a three-inch curb could easily be mounted, correct? And I think our intention was to make it so that it couldn't be excess, but I'll let other people weigh in on that. I, I mean, that was my intention at the time, but thought, this is a while ago.
Anything else, Mike?
Oh, that's it. Yeah, there's a, there's the fence, right?
Yes, this is, uh, this, the fence that was, um, well, this is, this is a, a modification from the fence that staff and the applicant agreed on in twenty nineteen. But, but now they're proposing a, a landscape timber in, in, in place of the fence.
Yeah. All right, well, let, let, let's hear what other people think, but I, I would probably prefer the fence, but I'll, I'll wait to hear. Thank you.
Um, I actually don't have a problem with the, the curve versus the fence. Do that fence, and I'm very familiar with the, the rope and timber fence, it's something that it's sub base, we use quite a bit. It's, it's decorative. In this case, there would be a lot of it, and I I can, don't know if it would be that beneficial, because it's, it's rope, it falls apart after a while, the post rot. The, the timbers, I think all we really needed to do is a, a, a semi, a somewhat permanent demarcation. In this case, the entire thing, we planted in the ground, so um, sure you drive over it, you need to drive over it in order to maintain the revegetated area, so without having gates or whatnot. So this would be a place where they wouldn't, wouldn't be able to cheat and kind of lap the tire over, everything become perfectly evident if in fact they start using areas they shouldn't. And frankly, that's, that's all I thought we were trying to go with. We, we're thinking of boulders and whatnot, but we it was always going to be somewhat accessible somehow. So I, I don't have a problem with the curb. Three inch doesn't sound like I'm not sure how that comes out to be a, a, a tie. A tie is, is, is much bigger than that. I thought a tie was actually seven and a half, was over seven and a quarter. So I'm not sure what the three inch, that's a four by. And that, that seems a little small to me. That looks, sounds like would disappear into the dirt pretty quickly. Um, this is just gonna be sitting in, in the dirt and into the, which will be muddy. And so I, I don't think four inch quite does it. So I would like to see something a little bit meatier, like a, a, uh, a railroad tie size. I, I think I can picture the, the landscape ties they're talking about, and you pin them down on either side. And, uh, they don't last that long and they disappear. So I'm, I'm not crazy about that, but having a surface curb of something a little bigger than three, three inches, three and a half inches, uh, I'd be okay with that. Or a mix, maybe go either way, where, where it's the appearance might be sort of beneficial, or I can't even picture this. Oh, I guess that's one thing. So when we do this, is this driveway up into the southeast, southwest side, is that going to still happen? As part of this phase?
This is already in place, driveway here in the.
Well, I'd, I'd say it's possible that there's some combination where maybe the rope needs to be there. Because that's just too easy, the landscape ties, I mean, the, the landscape timbers, I, I think will just disappear unless there's some major maintenance of them. Uh, I think it would be inadvertent. I don't think you'd want them to disappear, but I think they really would. I don't think it's just substantial enough. So some combination of the poster rope and, and, uh, timbers, I think would be fine.
Anything else, Hal?
No, that's it.
Barbara?
Yes, I have no problems with the phasing, but I am concerned about the, the fence, and I think there should be a fence. I, I think that any kind of a tie, even a, a seven-inch tie is not going to prevent the cars from being parked in the vegetation area. Um, I understand the need for maintenance, but I'm sure that one seven-foot wide perhaps entrance would be for that purpose only, would be, uh, manageable. But, and I think it's up to, uh, Cardinal Honda to design the fence that would meet our approval, uh, rather than us trying to design a fence, but I, I am definitely not in favor of just ties. I think that will, as it's been said, they will soon disappear. And we will find, uh, no demarcation. So I, I can't go along with that. Thank you.
Anything else, Barbara?
No.
Susan?
Yeah, I really don't have any additional concerns to those mentioned by Hal and Barb.
So you, you don't, either one, either.
I mean, I could see it's some concern. I, I understand. But I don't have anything else to say.
Okay, Kevin?
Um, so I have no additional concerns, but I, I'd almost like to hear from the applicant, you know, why that was taken out. I just don't think I've heard that yet, because I've agreed what the last three commissioners have said, so I'm not sure what their, their understanding is why that fence was taken out, um, Mr. Chair. That's it.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I can actually I, I can answer that, because we did have staff review on this last week, and the original condition did mention, um, it, it did say railroad ties or something similar to railroad ties, um, boulders or some other type of permanent identifiable marker, and I didn't mention that, um, and, and I guess they thought that, that type of tie system would be appropriate, um, but I, I, I didn't realize it was only, um, you know, three inches tall there. That's why I did raise the issue, so it, it was a suggestion of mine, but, um, I, I also suggested that the fence would be a good marker.
Well, Bruce, on the, the existing driveway that you said was put in, is what's up there now? Did they put a fence up there, or?
No, nothing. It's none, there, there's there, there's no separation, there's no, um, marker between the gravel driveway and the grass, no.
So the only thing it marks is where the gravel is?
Yes.
Yeah, and this new pa- proposed paving area is, is the existing drainage adequate for the impervious surface addition that exists today, or?
Um, I, I believe so. I mean, Clint, Clint, the engineer did design it to that, um, and, and, and he's saying it is, you know, we looked at it, Groton Utilities looked at it, they had no concerns with it, um, they, they thought it was adequate.
That's what exists, or is there a part, or something has to be done?
Uh, the
It's hard to understand with this plan, no way.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. Th- this stormwater system right here is in place, it exists now. It was installed to, um, to mitigate the, the pavement that is there now.
Oh, okay, that's what, that's, all right, that, so it, it is adequate then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, and when, when they add additional pavement in phase two, the stormwater system will be upgraded to accommodate that.
All right. Now, this proposed motion, uh, identifies a demarcation as boulders, railroad ties, or some other form of permanent identifiable marker. So they could use railroad ties as the intent?
Uh, the, the draft motion, that's the same motion that we, that we applied for the twenty nineteen.
That's what exists today, is the, is the motion. I mean, the requirement.
Yeah, that exists, that exists today, that, that runs with the twenty nineteen program, and you can modify it from the spacing plan, like.
Has the applicant seen this proposed amendment?
Yes, I sent it to, um, Clint Brown and Marty and Kim Cardinal today.
They have no con- concerns?
I, I didn't receive any concerns from them.
Okay.
They are here, they, they have it, so.
I don't know if they want to add anything.
Can I mention a little detail, just a little question?
Go ahead, Hal.
There's a, uh, to the south of the site, there's an existing walkway. Which I guess is well-developed, because apparently the sidewalk actually has a, a little pavement, um, connection to it. And I know it was very, it was informal, it just, this where people walked, I suppose, and it got you to the intersection there. And now it crosses over, clearly will cross over into the site and goes on to the gravel driveway. Just want to make sure that that just doesn't get, either, doesn't get blocked off. Apparently, if it's being ma- if it's happening a lot, and I can see where it would, it connects to neighborhoods. Um, that, uh, when we put in a fence or whatever they put in, be nice to make sure that that gets maintained. That can just be a technical item, but I don't see any reason why they wouldn't want people walking on part of the gravel drive. I don't think they were going to put in a a gate at that point. Was there a gate going in there? If there is, just needs to be enough room to walk around it, to not disturb this. Otherwise, somebody may be
If I remember, uh, how we, we, the concern was that there were a lot of cars that were being parked in that area. Uh, and we were trying to avoid that, if I remember correctly. That was, I, and I think that was part of why we put boulders. I, I, it wasn't like we wanted boulders up there, but I think we wanted to sort of like prevent that from becoming huge display area, but.
Yeah, well, my comment is actually, is secondary to the, the boulder or fence comment. It's just that, just want to make sure. I'm looking at it now, I don't remember any comment on it. There's that, that trail. And I'm pretty sure it gets, still gets used. It's maybe housing on both sides that connect to each other. Uh, that we don't inadvertently cut it off.
Yeah, well, the motion as it's prepared doesn't require a fence.
Technical item, that's just a
Yeah. I really think it's technical, but as a way it's written now, the fence isn't required.
No.
Hmm.
It says other identifiable marker, which could be a fence. This is why Bruce came up with what he did, which would have been fine.
But the fence is
Kind of makes sense. If there is a fence, you've got to leave an opening in there so that someone can get a
You gotta put
That's gonna be wide enough to let a car. I think that's what we were trying to avoid.
That was, uh, yeah, it was just to keep, yeah, cars from being parked there.
Yeah, so maybe the eight-inch curb would be the best thing, because I, I don't know if you have a new car, you're not gonna want to risk running it over an eight-inch curb.
Probably not.
Just put a little ramp to go over it, come on.
But I, I don't think typically the Honda vehicles don't have that kind of clearance.
Yeah, so it's probably
Odyssey, you can't get over a seven and a half inch curb. It does not work.
No, most cars, no, there are not many cars that have that much clearance.
Can we, can we leave this as a technical item and just allow staff to, uh, you know, they've heard our concerns? I think that the eight-inch curb would be what we're looking for.
The way the motion, the way the motion is written, or proposed motion is where it's written, it just says these areas show the, uh, demarcated with boulders, railroad ties, or some other form of permanent identifiable marker. So it doesn't require a fence.
Yeah, okay, so then that's
I would think that's adequate.
Yeah.
Because it, it was intended, I, I think, just so that it was obvious where the, the zone was.
And clearly, when we say demarcated with boulders or railroad ties, that sort of discounts the idea of a three and a half inch landscape timber, so.
A little bigger.
Yeah.
So it should, yeah. I would think it's adequate. So I have to bring the goats in to trim it, they can't get the lawnmower in. So, does anyone have any other comments or questions on this? Anyone have problems with the proposed motion?
My only problem is I don't think it's strong enough as far as the, uh, barrier, whatever you want to call it.
You know, i- i- it's to market as opposed to be a barrier. And this is what's today, if, if they didn't come to us, this is what would exist as written.
I thought the fence would have been existing. Isn't that on the plan?
Yeah, but what we passed before, Bruce said this was the term, terminology that was used.
But when you, when you put a picture of a fence on the plan, it indicates to me that that's what you're talking about.
I don't know where the fence came from.
Down a few pages, right there. Up.
Up, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it, it's here, um, so wha- what, what happened last time is in twenty nineteen, we put that condition on the approval, and it was directed to staff, that staff and the applicant worked together to try to find um, an identifiable mar- a demarcation marker that meets that, that, um, that condition, and this is essentially what we came up, and this version of this was incorporated into the stamp plan in twenty nineteen. And now for the phasing plan, they are, they're now asking for landscape timber, which does, you know, i- i- it certainly could meet that condition, but, uh, i- i- it's, it's up to, it's up to you if you want um, to direct staff to, to work with the applicant again, and perhaps make the landscape timber a little bigger, or if you prefer the fence, you know, you could, you could tell me that, and I could work with the applicant on that as well. And whatever detail we come up with would make it onto the final plan, the final phasing plan when we stamp and approve it.
I just noticed that it says a two-by-two timber post. Is that what it says?
Uh, on, on this, it did, the, the plan that was stamped in twenty nineteen, it's crooked here. But let me just rotate it.
That's a pretty small.
I, I don't know.
It's not a timber, that's a stick.
Yeah.
Sorry.
The, the stamp, the stamp plan in twenty nineteen was a, was a six-by-six post.
Sounds more like it, yeah.
So it shrunk, it shrunk, but it So it shrunk, it shrunk, but it did the new drawing.
They, they requested it be reduced, yeah.
You can't even can't actually put a, a rope through a two-by-two.
No, it would fall over. I don't think that would last.
No, twelve inches, uh, twelve feet on center.
Okay. Uh, we can leave the, can we leave the motion the way it is, and a- and if there are adjustments to it, this would be considered a technical item? I mean, it's really just to mark the area, right? It's not to prohibit, not to be a bear- physical barrier, visual barrier.
That's hardly a visual barrier.
What, if it's railroad ties?
Even a fence wouldn't be a, you could do a, what is it, posted rail fence, and that's certainly not a visual barrier.
Oh. Yeah, but it's just visual. What I mean is
Guess we should be more clear in the future when we, uh, make, uh,
Well, I was, I thought the intent, when we passed the original one, was just to make sure it was marked as opposed to being a physical barrier. Wasn't it?
That was my understanding, and that's the way it's written.
That's how the termina- yeah, terminology is on the proposed motion.
The demarcation.
Is a demarcation, right? Well, I'm gonna make, make the motion as it's written, and if people wanna change it, you can amend it. Just to get things moving. So I'll make a motion to approve site plan twenty-one sixteen for Cardinal Honda Modification five thirty-one Route twelve with the following modifications, one, there shall be no parking, storage, or display of any vehicles within the areas of revegetation. These areas shall be demarcated with boulders, railroad ties, or some other form of permanent identifiable marker. Two, vehicle display and/or parking shall only occur in the, in the areas specified on the phasing plan. Areas identified as vehicle display area that will not be paved in phase one, but are proposed to be paved in phase two shall not be used for display slash parking until phase two is complete. Three, the design engineer shall certify the stormwater system has been constructed per the approved plan prior to the issuance of a certificate of site plan compliance. Four technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed, is there a second?
Second. Or so.
Any discussion on the motion?
I would just, the only thing I would say is, uh, with Hal's concerns, that if, that if we change it to an eight-by-eight-inch railroad tie, and, and to put the word exposed in, so that the eight-inch railroad tie isn't buried five inches into the ground.
Well, but then what kind of railroad tire are you talking about? We cleared that it's not creosote and all that?
No, 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 while I would imagine it would be a pressure, no, I, I guess we use that term, uh, it's what, an eight-inch by eight-inch, it, it could just be wood tie, a wood, uh, I mean, uh, that word tie, I don't know, it was traditionally used as for the railroad, but, uh, it could be oak, I don't, and you know, they could be, uh, oak boards or pressure-treated, I suppose.
Or concrete today.
And it's just an eight-inch.
That's what they use today.
Herb, is, is that what you're thinking, Hal?
I think so, I mean, I don't even know, you get, do you actually get wood, actual wood railroad ties anymore? I mean, that indicates the size, it's a turn, it isn't eight by eight, it's seven and a quarter, but so it doesn't matter. It's just that it's
And they're preserved, and they're preserved.
They're preserved somehow, so preserve a creosote.
They don't rattle.
Pressure-treated, what are they, we don't care.
Creosote.
I don't think
I think it's, I don't think we care, I, I mean, I, obviously, Sue, and I, I would care, but, uh, would have to be something that's acceptable to everyone. But I, I think the dimensions are what we're concerned with, and I think eight-inch nominal, uh, timber there, timber, I suppose, is the word that we would use.
Timber, don't know, do we wanna just get, it's only a few more sentences, few more words in there, if we wanna get technical about it, saying uh, they having a seven-inch projection, or something like that, so put it together any way you like. They could put it out of timbers, they could make it out of concrete, they could find pipe rail, we're not, we're not concerned, so long as it's something that you don't easily drive over, and so we're kind of looking for that seven-inch above grade. Be it a boulder, I mean, that's why we thought
Just call it a barrier.
It's a barrier, but doesn't have to be a complete physical.
Seven-inch fence. They make stone fences, right?
Well, we either leave it as a technical item, or somebody has to make an amendment to the motion.
I would make an amendment.
What do you wanna make, amend?
Uh, include a seven-inch, seven-and-one-quarter-inch barrier, or seven-inch barrier.
What do you wanna say? Change those boulders, railroad, or?
Change the chick, take out railroad tie and, and change it to a, you know, seven-inch bar- seven-inch vertical.
Well, I said, you don't need to say vertical, otherwise it'll be seven inches wide. They can put a two-by-eight, they can lay a two-by-eight in the ground, that.
Thank you. Yes, yeah.
Why do I think that way?
Do you wanna change railroad ties to seven-inch barrier?
Seven-inch vertical. Seven-inch vertical dimension.
Or barrier. So I, I you wanna change there, we're, you take out railroad ties and just say, or a wooden barrier with seven-inch or minimum seven inches.
Right.
Right?
It doesn't need to be wooden.
Yeah, it could be.
Make it whatever you want. It can be rocks, it can be
Yeah, no, I, I think we're, I think my only concern would be the height.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, as long as it's, you know, some
Then you wanna take out the barriers and just say with a, uh, with a permanent identifiable marker with seven inches, a minimum seven inches exposure, or vertical exposure.
But, yeah, I both agree.
That works, yeah.
We are careful.
So you wanna make the motion to say with take out boulders railroad ties.
Don't take out boulders.
No, you take the whole thing out and just say demarcated with a vert- or a very, uh, ident- permanent identified marker with a minimum of seven-inch vertical exposure, so you don't care what it is. Hmm.
Right.
That's, so
Boulders, cobbles, wood.
Yeah, so I don't care about the material, just a very
Yeah, they certainly put boulders there if they wanted to, we want seven inches of minimum.
Yes. Hmm. So, is that what you wanna make the, the amendment?
That's what, yeah, that's fine, by me.
Is there a second, smooth and second? Any discussion on the amendment? Apparently none will vote on the amendment, all those in favor of a barrier seven inches, minimum vertical exposure? Say aye.
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 Any opposed, any extensions, motion, amendment, motion to amend it is passed unanimously. Now we're back to the voting on the, uh, main motion to approve the, uh, site plan as amended, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, the main motion is passed unanimously. Well, it's a struggle. No engineering input. I'd have to have a Zoom training. All right. Moving on to Factory Square Restaurant Edition. Is that yours, Bruce?
Yes, that is also mine.
We have the applicant present for that.
Yes, it's Seamus Moran, and, um, Seamus, if you'd like me to promote anyone else as well, we'll be presenting, just let me know, and I can.
I see his picture on the
Um, I made it, I'm back home, so I can, I can show you guys.
Clint to delay it so you could get home and
I appreciate it, yeah, that's what I was doing, um, if Bruce, if you could, uh, Cindy Reynolds, Dave Adkins, and Todd Brady, and Peter Fine are all part of the team, I think they're all here. Could you, um, promote them as well, please?
Yes, I see all of them, and I am promoting them right now.
Thank you. Well, I, I can get started while you're promoting them, um, good evening, commission, uh, thanks for having me. Um, I'm Seamus Moran, a professional engineer in Connecticut. Um, I'm representing, uh, among other people here, um, Factory Square LLC, uh, and Todd Brady, who's the owner of Factory Square LLC um, for their project located at twelve Water Street, which is, as you guessed, at Factory Square. Um, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, it's in downtown Mystic, it's a historical, or it's a mixed-use, uh, site, apartments and commercial use, um, the front building is been restaurants and, and the like uses for a number of years, it's, it's a historical building. Um, the northern half of that building has been vacant for a number of years, it was most recently Zhang's, I believe it was, um, Zhang's Restaurant. Um, so we are here for a site plan and CAM application to, um, construct in addition to that northern vacant portion of the building. Um, it's about a thousand, a little over a thousand square feet, and, uh, construct a, an almost two-thousand-square-foot deck, um, as well um, for that space, so we can get, um, a, a new restaurant in there. Um, joining me tonight, as I, as I just mentioned, are, is our team, Cindy Reynolds from CR3 at La Raro, she's our landscape architect. Um, she works with me at La Raro, um, Dave Adkinson, uh, is the archi- project architect. Todd Brady, you, I'm sure you're familiar with his face, uh, he is the applicant and the owner of Factory Square. And Peter Fine, who is the restaurateur, who will be, uh, occupying the space. Um, so I will pass it off at this point to Cindy, um, who will present all the technical aspects of our, our application. And, um, and she will pass it off to Dave and, and so on and so forth, until you guys have heard all you can hear, so, uh, Cindy, if you don't mind, would you take it over from here?
Great, thank you, Seamus, hi, I'm Cindy Reynolds, as he said, I'm a landscape architect, I work out of the Plainfield, Plainfield office for La Raro Engineering, and Seamus in Grotton is the the one who knows all about Grotton, so, um, between the two of us, um, we have been working with Todd and Peter and Dave to put together the application, um. I have started sharing my screen, are you folks able to see, you should be looking at the cover sheet for the coastal site plan? All right, excellent, um, and I just discovered today my new favorite tool, a spotlight tool, so I can actually point the things on the screen, it's very exciting. Um, so the existing conditions is, as Seamus mentioned, it's a developed site, we've got the apartment buildings and mixed use in the two larger buildings, and then the front building has fire tucks and existing restaurant and outdoor dining right now, and then this is a section of the building that we're looking to, or proposing to have renovated and in addition put on in this area here. Access into the courtyard on the northern side and the southern side. Um, and then this is, uh, fairly open, and, um, residents can enter the apartment complex in this upper corner here, there's a couple residents right in this area here. And then, um, Barley Head Brewery is in this corner here, so those are the most, um, impacted areas of the proposed site plan. Um, you'll see up here, there is existing onsite parking for residents. And, um, this is a naturalized ledge area, which, um, we will be looking to do some improvements on. So, site demolition should be pretty straightforward, um, you'll see in that ledge area, this is just some, um, vegetation adjustment, we're looking to make this more accessible for use, and then in the courtyard, you'll see that, um, there's demolition happening along the northern walk, we're getting rid of, um, a lot of impervious concrete walk, um, and we're largely leaving the southern portion alone, so that it will be as it stands. So these are the proposed conditions, you'll see in green, um, it outlines community recreation space for the residents, that's something that is currently not delineated on site. Um, so as part of this, we will be providing the required amount of recreation community space. This will be, um, a walkable, um, it'll be a bit steep, so perhaps a little bit hikeable area that will be lawn going up to seating, and then, um, a more easily enjoyed lawn area towards the bottom. Uh, you will see a couple green patches on the building, that's in the interior, uh, bike rack space, which the residents have used of. And then we are delineating within the courtyard, um, the portion which we are designating for resident use, um, primary public access is from the south and the north, so this is an area which will be um, primarily unused as part of gaining access to the public amenities in this space. Um, I do have an enlargement of the courtyard, just to make it a bit easier to talk about the main portion of our proposed work. Um, please note, the red dash lines are the fire lane, eleven-foot-wide fire lane, which, um, we have maintained as open, it is largely paved, um, so vehicles will be able to get up in there, and then this, there is a thin strip which is not paved, that would just be um, landscape which could be driven over should an emergency arise, but quite frankly, a vehicle would be hard pressed to get this far into the courtyard, um, but they could do it if they really tried, um. So, uh, coming up this way is the ADA accessible route for the apartments in this corner. Um, the accessible route for the restaurant itself would be up this ramp. This is the main entry landing, so people would be able to come up some steps or come up the ramp, and then the main entrance to the restaurant would be right here. This dash line is a canopy, and this darker tan is the proposed addition. You'll note the seating comes out, we're looking to do decking, it's going to be pervious, there'll be gaps between the boards, and it will be gravel underneath, so water will simply float right through as much as water floats, anyway. Um, and then this, we're looking to use, uh, planters and wood fencing as an enclosure. Um, we don't have any areas that require full fall protection fencing, but we do want to provide a visual barrier and a sense of space for the occupants, and a little bit more privacy for um, the more semi-private residential space. Um, a couple other features of note, we are providing two new bike racks. One will be set over here on the existing concrete walk, and then the other by the northern alley, so to speak, um, which will be on a simple gravel, gravel bed. Let's see, I think that about covers it for the general use, um. The next plan shows, um, some of the utilities which you might be interested in. Um, we are increasing the pervious pavement, decreasing impervious, so, um, we will have a net reduction in coverage. Which, um, despite that, we have provided a couple, um, little rain gardens for stormwater Which um despite that, we have provided a couple um little rain gardens for stormwater treatment, we were hoping to just ensure that um given some of the recent large rain events, that if we have any really intense flow, that it will collect on site and be treated before it gets into that storm system. Um so that is what you're seeing here. The existing sewer and and water, the existing grease trap are all going to be reused and there will just be um some slight reworking of the electrical lines to work with the new addition. Um and I think that about covers what we need to discuss in terms of the site. Um so uh unless there are any questions which you would like to discuss at the moment, we I will stop share and pass it off to Dave.
Hey, before you hop in, um Bruce, would you mind adding Peter Fine again? I I didn't see him uh available and I think he might be here waiting.
Sure, I I tried to, but I I will try again.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
No, no problem.
Thank you, Cindy, let me just share my screen here. So good evening, David Atkinson, architect for Milestone Restaurant, Peter Fine and Todd Brady. Uh this is the set of drawings we've submitted for approval. Uh basically, this page is just the code study, but you can see this is the Water Street elevation that was the previous restaurant, these are the four bays that will be um the the new milestone restaurant access, as Cindy pointed out, will be up the walkway to the right here. Over here to this side, not shown in the picture, is the Friar Tux space. Scrolling down, this is a drawing of the existing building, again, over here is the current Friar Tux space. Down here is Water Street. This is the existing uh current space, about twenty-two hundred and forty square feet that is unoccupied. This little appendage here will be torn down, this is the space that we will be renovated for the main body of the new restaurant. So as you will approach the restaurant from Water Street, which is again down here, you would walk up the walkway between the existing built, the existing two buildings, the residential building to the right where and then this is the existing space here, you will enter the restaurant here onto uh what Cindy pointed out as a large wood patio with deck. Um there'll be an an open bar here, there is a roof covering shown by this dotted line. So there'll be a ramp uh up here, a couple of steps. And then the main entrance to the restaurant is through these doors here. So there'll be a large uh be an outdoor seating area, about a hundred seats here. Um to the back of the um restaurant, there'll be a service station, walk-in coolers, this is the proposed addition. Approximately a thousand and fifty square feet, this is, the addition will be uh essentially all kitchen with a restroom for the kitchen staff and then service entrances. And then in the existing space now, the brick building, that is the main body of the restaurant with a bar. Um I'll show you the seating plan in a moment, there'll be a couple of new uh restrooms, there'll be, again, the main entrance is here, there'll be a emergency egress here. And again, this is the Friar Tux space and their existing cooler and kitchen outback. So from Water Street, the the view will essentially not change, um this again is Friar Tux over here, this is the existing archway. And this is the are the four bays that I showed in the first picture, um these will not change, these are sort of the overhead or these are the overhead doors that open. Um so the front of the building will not change, just wanted to point out, uh some of the Friar Tux existing rooftop equipment is visible um at least two dimensionally uh above the roof line of the existing building, none of the new rooftop equipment for Milestone Space will be visible from Water Street. This is the view as you walk up uh the alleyway between the residential or between the the Factory Square Building and the and the existing brick building. These uh existing openings will be replaced with, are they boarded up now, there'll be uh new windows to match sort of the storefront, or I'm sorry, the overhead door look on on the Water Street. Here is the steps up, the ramp up, there'll be another large window here, this is the back bar of the the new proposed outdoor bar. There will be a canopy over the bar and seating area. Again, highlighted by this dotted line, so this is all sort of undercover. And then, as Cindy pointed out, there's a fence and or planter surrounding the entire patio, not necessarily by code to keep people from falling, but obviously to enclose um the the seating area. This is a a a partial roof plan of just the proposed kitchen addition with a couple of rooftop fans. And then that roofed area over the outdoor bar, which is here with some skylights. This is looking at the backside of the building, the opposite side from Water Street. Again, uh here's this canopy that extends over pretty much all the seating area, we have a couple of eight-foot-high horizontal board screens to screen both the server area, the walk-in coolers, this is the seating area over here, this is a new window and this is a new window and this is the main entrance to match uh the the windows on the front of the building. Here, we show the rooftop equipment, we have three exhaust fans and a new intake fan. This is actually the equipment on the top of Friar Tux and I'm going to jump to a picture real quick. This is what you see now at Friar Tux, you can see they have an exhaust fan and an intake fan that actually stick up way above the roof of the existing brick building. This is their kitchen and this is their storage area, so they have all this equipment going back to what we're proposing, our uh proposed equipment is much lower below the roof line of the main brick building and in fact below most of what they have at Friar Tux. This is uh looking back from, so the Friar Tux end, this is the Friar Tux end, this is the Friar Tux kitchen, again, the Friar Tux equipment, our equipment, our screen and screen in the uh screen, the seating area. This is just the restrooms, so this is the overall seating layout, again, main entrance here, ramp up into the main entrance to the building, outdoor bar. So again, about a hundred and one seats proposed out here on on the bar, um service area, walk-in cooler, rear door to the kitchen. The one thousand and fifty square foot addition is pretty much all kitchen and a small restroom. The existing brick building, uh the space that Milestone is taking is about a hundred and three seats with a new large bar, two restrooms, again uh emergency exit there and this is the Friar Tux space. So that's pretty much the architectural design in a nutshell, uh if there's any questions, I'm happy to respond.
Will we turn out? Does the applicant have anything else to add?
No, I think uh again, this is Seamus Moran from the record, um I think Cindy and uh and Dave had covered all the technical aspects of of fairly thoroughly, the only thing that I forgot to mention is that um Factory Square has and is currently a a participant in the uh downtown voucher program, the the parking program. Um they will continue to do so for the foreseeable for for foreseeable future, uh especially for this development, so um that will not change and that will that will remain, so. Um that's the only other little tidbit I wanted to add, um besides that, I think that is uh the culmination of our presentation, I'm not sure if Bruce or the commission has any comments.
Turn it over to Bruce for his presentation and open it up to the commission for their comments.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um yeah, Bruce Lawton here again. Um yeah, just a just a quick rundown on um on the application, so this is um located in the MDD, so any development in the MDD does need to be reviewed under the Design and Building Standards, um and Factory Square is um, you know, a longstanding example of a mixed-use property, you know, it has pedestrian connections, it has bike racks. Um also, the architecturals and pretty much this entire application is going to be reviewed and approved by the H, it need to be approved by the HTC. So um it it should be, you know, in conformance with the building standards for the district. Um I will add that standard restaurants, which is would be the use for this proposal are permitted by right. Um in the MDD, the outdoor patio is subject to conditions, um and that is section five point one dash one E. Um notable condition on that is that the hours of operation for the outdoor patio are limited to between seven AM and ten PM. Um I did suggest a condition in the draft motion that places this on on the on the approval, but also includes the the covered portion of the back deck, just so there's no confusion that that regulation would apply both the uncovered portion of the outdoor patio and the the covered portion of the outdoor patio. Um as for parking, um so Factory Square has thirty-four onsite spaces, they are also a bit unique in Mystic because they actually have a long stand, a longstanding lease of a hundred and eleven parking spaces with the Mystic Museum of Art. So although Factory Square does um participate in the validation program, this restaurant will as well. Um so that what goes along with that is that signs need to be posted at the front door, it needs to be on the menu, um guests need to be aware that they have the ability to validate their parking by going to this restaurant, so I I did guess that condition as well in the approval to make sure that all of that is incorporated into this restaurant use. And not just for Factory Square as a whole, because it it will be important that this restaurant is a is a participant. Um so outside of that, the community and recreation space, um they are going to maintain at least one hundred square feet per unit on site, I think there are forty-three units in Factory Square and they have over forty-three hundred square feet of community recreation space. So it it for that um regulation, especially because they're adding new um recreation space up in the in the top corner, not shown here. Uh this project is also located within the coastal area management boundary. Um it did, in in this case, they're over four hundred feet away from the Mystic River and across the road. Um there's a lot of development between them and the river and the impervious coverage here is actually going to be reduced. So I I I didn't see any any issues with any negative implications to the to the coastal um resource here. Uh yeah, that's that's all that's all I had.
Okay. Now open it up to uh commissioners for their comments, I'll start with you, Mike.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman, I uh I had uh on, if the architect could bring up page A six. Perfect, thank you, so uh there you go, that might, I guess, it it's not, uh I'm just like curious as to how we deal, when you have a canopy, how do you deal with the drip line there, uh water, snow falling on to tables? And uh is this a four-season kind of operation?
Uh so we actually have a, we have a detail.
Or something heat out there?
I'm sorry, no, it 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 is not a four-season operation, this is a section through the roof plan here. So essentially, we're looking to do an industrial look with some sort of beam here, a gutter, we're proposing a couple of downspouts that Cindy could speak to the exact location. But no, this is, this is wide open, um it's only, you're only protected from rain and and vertical precipitation. Um it is not meant to be a three-season, I you know, it's possible that the owner may put some temporary heaters out there, you know, in the spring and fall. But and when the snow is flying, I don't expect to see a lot of people out there and it is not enclosed uh at this point. Um it is really just a canopy with a gutter.
All right, that's fine, and then uh I guess it, I mean, I'm I'm fine with that, uh I'm I'm glad that you showed me that. Because when I see water like that coming down yeah uh from one of these things, I'm put uh the fence that goes around this same area, so back to page A six. The the low fence, is there s- is that something that someone could potentially be sitting on, falling over backwards or?
At this point, right now, w- we're proposing, this would be a planter, so this would be a couple feet thick, um so I guess you could sit in the planter, but there will be plants there, this is a fence which is essentially just a, um and again, I'm going to scroll up to another detail, if I can find it real quick, right here. Um it's really just a series of boards, horizontal boards, um so you you could sit on a, you know, a three-quarter inch wide edge of a board. Um you can lean against it, but.
Okay, it's not going to have a flat top or anything like.
No, it's not intended to have a flat top or a seat in any way.
Okay. Uh and then, uh how about trash and recycles, that kind of stuff there and likewise uh in this area, how is that dealt with?
Um Peter, are you available to handle that?
Well, I I can speak to that, this is Todd Brady, the um there is a dumpster enclosure at the uh southeast corner of the property and uh that enclosure contains a number of containers, including recycling and uh it is actually only used by the restaurants at the property, not the residences. And um and so that that dumpster, which was previously used um or dumpster enclosed, used by Zhang's will be used by Milestone too.
Going to be generating some serious trash here, I would imagine.
Yeah, and and then, and in the summer, they typically increase the number of pickups to accommodate that.
Okay, all right, I'm good with that, and then uh the uh bike racks that are being uh put into, I don't know where we were on that, I didn't make a note page, I guess it's back up to the top. But uh the location of those, what's the logic behind having one so far back and how large are they?
So hi, Cindy here, I can, I can speak to that, of course, um so great question, the so the set, the bike racks will be the inverted U, which is um what we understand to be preferred by the the town, they're a great rack, um the logic behind the one that is towards the back of the courtyard is that um it is an accessible area that users would be able to get their bike to without going all the way through the um the garden and and the curved path, so if folks come from the southern direction, that one will be more convenient and if they come from the northern, then the other bike rack would be more convenient, we would have located it closer to the courtyard entry, but unfortunately the existing space and use wasn't really compatible, so.
That's what I was kinda wishing for, but I I get it.
We did too.
Um how it, I don't, how many bike racks are on this entire site and how do we determine how how much we need, maybe that's for Bruce, but but uh maybe you can answer that, Cindy.
Um so I guess I would defer to to Bruce for the technicalities on on how it's determined, just off the top of my head, it's not there. Um but the the majority of the bike racks are for the residents and are in the interior so that they are secure. We are providing um the four bikes worth of parking in the courtyard. Um and that is um combined with the the interior that we have ample bike parking, so um I don't know, Bruce, if you would like to get into the details on the regulation.
Um sure, yeah, I can do that, um we we did look at bike parking on this site and the MDD, it doesn't specify um an exact amount like some of the other districts do. Um it it does say that we, it needs to be provided, um but we felt that the two racks outside along with the interior bike storage was was sufficient for this site, um you you can't see it on this plan, um I I don't know if you noticed it on on the site plan, but there there it it does show different areas of bike storage within within the the residential part of the interior and Factory Square.
Okay, all right, I know that I we had talked about working on these regulations, hopefully that happens to increase them at some point or to make them indoor bike storage. I had asked about that, maybe we can have another conversation.
Yes.
That's all. Thank, thank you.
Yep.
Um, Bruce, if, I'm not sure if you can share, somebody can share, but note um, note number nine on sheet two on the notes page of the site plan set discusses the parking calculation. We had thirty four um, vehicle parking spaces provided times five percent, which was two bicycle parking spaces. Uh, the, the calculation came was a determined by the number of parking spaces onsite. Um, we had a total of nineteen spaces to um, provided seventeen within the enclosed facility. Um, two new spaces are provided in the courtyard. So I I think that number actually increased to four spaces in the courtyard. So that's where the number, that's where our number
Okay, that's fine. Thank, thank you, Seamus. I just, my personal feeling is that we have to start thinking about uh making those numbers larger somehow. But that's, that's another subject for another day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mike?
That's all.
Now?
Um, I'm pretty good with the whole thing. Just before I forget that the the idea of which I I agree doesn't apply to this is think about and maybe even Todd, if you want to think about not too far in the future, electric bikes are going to change how many bikes people use. Because now suddenly everybody who's up the hill can get down and get back again. So I I agree, biking is tough in this town right now because the hills and it will stop being tough when everybody has electric bike. And we're all gonna have them. We're gonna age out to need electric bikes. Um, that said, I'm actually okay with the plan very much. I'd look a little surprised that you're, you're just using the original entrance on the street side as just uh, as an exit. I suppose you just want to have hardware on the outside, so people won't be trying it. Does that's the idea? Cause that's been the door to the place for forever. You could turn left or turn right. I think originally it was all one restaurant. You turned right. So now we're saying you're the the apparent entrance to it isn't going to be an entrance. You're gonna have to go up this courtyard.
I'm sorry, I mean, interrupt. I I could comment on this. This is Todd Brady again. The the feeling was, there were two reasons for doing that. One of them was, you create a little bit more of a sense of of entrance or mystery when you go up a courtyard to get to an actual entrance to a restaurant. The other reason is from an operating standpoint. Um, one of the issues that uh, Gary at Friar Tux has had to deal with with his courtyard is, well, where exactly do I enter this restaurant? Now, there's a lot of people come up the the South Alley. And enter at the patio outside area. Others come in the main entrance and then work their way through the restaurant. So the idea here is is that there is one point of entrance, whether you're going to the outdoor patio or you're going to go into the building. Which we think is a, it's an efficiency move.
Okay. I get that. In fact, the Friar Tux, I think they actually have two stations where you can check in at this point, or maybe they've given up on that front one. And so you're trying to avoid that here, which makes some sense. I was wondering how you're going to funnel people up that courtyard. I think on the opposite side for for uh, margaritas, there's an overhead sign hanging outside. At least gives people a hint. Are you gonna do something like that here? Because I don't know why people would think they need to walk up here.
I I guess we hope it will become a learned response with the passage of time, but uh, there, I'm sure that will be a sign. Which has not been presented to the historic district mission yet, but at the front of the building.
You actually still have a bracket hanging on that side. It's actually to the left of your multiple signs on. I'm looking at the street view right now. Bracket is still there.
That's the old Zhang Zhang
Right, right. And it's, it's not in the right place. You'd have to move it over closer to the edge of the building. I think that would be welcome to be a way to get people up there. Otherwise, I'm I'm fine. I just noticed something was that uh, on all your, your uh elevations that you showed the uh, just as the short screen in front of the walk-in coolers that you've got in the back of the kitchen. And is it, is the machinery for the, the compressors for those things elsewhere? Or is it sitting on top of the cooler, like every other cooler I've ever seen in my life?
Probably sitting on top of the cooler.
So, which means your screen doesn't really screen the nasty
It's probably not gonna screen at all anyway. Yeah, I mean, so we've got an eight foot screen. So yes, there'll probably be presser up here.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if we could really comment on that because you can't see it from the street. It's on your own property, but I would just suggest the thing is, everything else is taken care of so well and it's gonna be nice and visible from both Friar Tuck and your place, but everything else is screened so nicely.
Valid point, sir.
Yeah. Um, other than that, I'm good with everything. Looks terrific. I did notice, by the way, that I think you have, what was that, a hundred and eleven spots that you rent right now? Which is interesting for our point of view. So we can't knock anything have to do with the parking. Even though you produce, you're not giving any new parking. But I think there's only two hundred spaces.
Are those dedicated? I don't get that.
Those are non-exclusive spaces.
Exclusive. So there's, we we've, we've talked about this before. How many times can they sell the same spaces? And apparently Todd has rented half of them. And so what we've been giving other people spaces, it's really aren't very many going around anymore. So we really need to uh clamp down on any future items. Here, obviously with this project, he's already got them. But the future projects we need to watch.
Well, it's it's it, from our standpoint, it's always been a somewhat frustrating thing because Factory Square has rented these spaces for probably twenty five plus years. And and we pay a pretty hefty price for them. Um, but if you actually want to use the space, except for a slight amount of overflow that you may get from the apartments in the courtyard. Um, you get to pay for them, but if you want to use them, you have to pay again. It it works great for the museum.
Worth worthy cause, I suppose, but you know, it's
Do you renegotiate that, Todd?
I've tried. With with no luck whatsoever.
All right, that's all I have.
Okay, Barbara.
Uh, yes, I think my first thought when seeing this is all those poor renters are going to have all this noise in their backyards. Uh, and I, I believe there have been previous complaints about fire trucks. Fire, fire, you know what I'm trying to say, not fire trucks. Friar tucks, noise at night. Uh, and there have been complaints about it. And this is certainly uh I I anticipate more problems. And I, I, I care about the residents and of all of those apartments, forty three. I know they all don't face that uh, courtyard area, but uh I don't think they bargained when they rented to have uh outdoor dining in their I don't know, backyard, I guess.
Well, can I comment on that?
Sure, I hope so.
It this, it's, it's, it's a valid point, Barbara, except that for the last twenty years, whenever an apartment is rented at Factory Square, we are very upfront about the fact that one, you are living downtown and two, that this is uh, that your apartment may, if you're not on the north side of the building, uh, but a courtyard, which can be um uh, rather lively and active. And and that if that is an issue, um, then a prospective tenant should look to to rent on the, on the north side. Um, or if not, maybe look to to live in an apartment, which is a quieter location. So although I agree, it's a valid concern. It's fully disclosed to our residents. And all I can tell you is, we have basically been at a hundred percent occupancy for the last four years. And right to the point of someone moves out on Friday, someone else moves in on Saturday. So uh, that isn't to say that there have been some noise issues there, but I think that our tenants are fully informed and and fully aware. And it's a decision that I think a lot of them make that I I I like this. This is an environment I'm willing to accept and uh I'll tolerate it or live with it or love it, one or the other.
Okay. Um, my second concern, um I'm thinking back to when we've had, uh, when Factory Square was first approved, perhaps. Uh, and the changes that have been made over the years. And there've always been concern about uh, the use of that, all of that open space for recreation, uh, just being open. Other concerns, I know we've talked about it. Now that's practically totally disappeared. And I don't quite uh, see how clearing some of that ledge and calling it recreation space quite makes it.
So I will um, just share a screen again, if that's acceptable, so that we can take a look at um, the area in question. So um, that is something, Ms. Harbor, that we did discuss was um balancing that, um, knowing that this is not a traditional private courtyard. This is um, it has been used as a semi-public space, um with residents being the primary users of portions of it. Um, so what we sought to do was find an area that really was something that would be a bit more set aside from the the public circulation. Um, so up on the northern portion, um, there's this really beautiful natural feature of the ledge. And while it's overgrown at the moment, we feel that um, once we clear this up, clean it up, do some minor grading adjustments to make it um, easier to scale that you could walk up it. It will be a bit of a steep walk, but um, that's part of the fun of it and in our thoughts. Um, and then once you get up to this top, you have a rather interesting view of um, the area. So well, we understand that it it's very different from the type of recreation space that was originally discussed um, for this property. We do think that it's currently an underutilized amenity and we're kind of excited to to let people get up there and and check it out. And apparently my computer wants to process for about an hour before my, my zoom in works. I apologize for that.
Anything else, Barbara?
It's an awfully intense use, but okay. I can't wait. Another new restaurant. I really can. I love them.
You can use one of the hundred and twelve rented spaces parking.
I won't be biking.
Stations for the electric bikes.
Yeah, electric bike, Barbara. You're, it's right around the corner.
With training wheels, though. Susan?
Yeah, uh, Cindy, another question for you. I didn't really understand it, um, natural area either too much, but um I'd have to go and see it, see what it looks like. You could be, it's probably true. You get a really interesting view. Um, but one question I had was, what's the maximum grade as you go down that? You know, if it's gonna be like a pathway. What would be your maximum to get down there?
So we haven't done the micro grading yet, so I'm afraid I can't tell you off the top of my head. Um it will be steep. It will not be an an ADA accessible item area. I, these I believe are one in three or one in four. So it, you will need to, we'll need to do some grading to smooth this out a bit and it will be um, an iterative process to to get the the walk up there to work. So we're envisioning it more of a walking trail as opposed to the you know, a perfect park lawn.
Well, what would be the maximum grade you'd accept then?
Um I actually hadn't thought about that in too much detail. Um, I think one in um, what is it? Um twelve percent? Remembered off the top of my head and unfortunately, that's not a number I just looked at. Um
No, that's okay. I'm not, I'm not trying to put you on the spot or anything. I just, um, I know that sometimes conditions get slick and all that. And it'd be very easy, especially on a rock surface to have a fairly dangerous situation. And I don't know if you're gonna have any railing in that case or whatever. Um, or I don't know what you mean when you talk about grading, if you're gonna actually be going into the rock, crushing the rock or something or
Yeah, that's, that's a great point. So um, the the ledge is um, exposed. You you can see it's delineated here. Um, so we're looking to do plantings between the area that we designate for walking and the rock. So we would not be setting it up for people to be walking across rock. It would be um, a grass or naturalized path. And then the the plantings will be situated to um, steer people away from the edge of the, of the ledge itself.
Right. Okay. Well, I'll look forward to seeing it one of these days. Thank, that's all I had, Jeff.
Kevin?
Sure, I have a couple of things. Um, first, I I think um, Factory Square and the applicant, they actually did a great job on an entrance. Because what it does, which I know it happens at Friar Tux, it takes it away from Water Street where people now appear to stumble out of those bars, appears to be late night, and it's moved it over the whole the um, the traffic pattern as far as walking to the side. So I I thought that was um, very well done. And I also like what they did with their restaurant equipment and exhaust on top of the roof, which now in this new one is um is not even visible. I think Hal had mentioned it prior to um to me speaking. What is upsetting, but hardly this applicant, as you all know, my algorithms as far as the Mystic Art Association just continue to grow. We we never stop putting those in. We have a new plan that we have yet to be implemented. And here's a restaurant, which is arguably the best partner in downtown with a hundred and eleven seats, and we're putting in two hundred and four um, um, seats, um, covers, um, just in one sitting in in the restaurant. And that that is is unacceptable as we move in the future. Good partner here, but we just cannot continue to do this again, guys. We've got to implement that parking plan as a um, as a commission and as a town as quickly as we can. Um, my fourth point is the rec- the recreation space, as just mentioned to the two prior commissioners, is really underwhelming. I mean, what what are you gonna do in that recreation space? You got a ledge you could jump off of, I presume, and then you have some trees. I mean I understand we're dealing with a very small space, but it's a little underwhelming. So I'd love for Factory Square to come up with something that is very attractive. We'll see how it goes, but um, that would be um, it's hardly a technical item, more of a direction as far as that's concerned. Um, my one question is, those windows in the front that face Water Street, are those garage doors that go up into the ceiling? And if so, is there any barrier from the street in into tho- those windows?
Yeah, I can address that. This is Todd Brady again. Those those garage doors um, are, it's a split garage door. And so the bottom, the bottom two panels there, which are at a height of forty eight inches are fixed.
Great, that's terrific.
The bottom of the door there is basically also the, is the guardrail and higher than code requires in any
Great point. Thank you. That's all I have, my Mr. Chair.
Just a couple of items. Rose, uh, on approvals from town agencies, is the historic district approve this change?
I believe they are reviewing it tomorrow. Is it correct, Todd?
We we're on the agenda for next Tuesday, Mr. Richard, uh, Mr. Chairman, and we, there's been a preliminary presentation and uh, that was made uh, on the nineteenth, but there was no Historic Issue Commission meeting on the second because it's election day. So um, it's, we're on the ag- agenda for next Tuesday for a public hearing.
So we'd be approving something that could be changed and have, you'd have to come back to us again?
Uh, it's, it's possible. Um, but as I said, we we did make a presentation already to the, to the historic district mission and they've commented on it.
But you really don't have any changes that are viewed But you really don't have any changes that are view visible from the street? Which is.
Not really, but the Historic District Commission still has jurisdiction because it's considered, it's open to the public. It's considered a public way.
Oh, it is on the backside? And is there gonna be a continuous pathway from one side of that courtyard all the way around like today?
Yes, you can get from one side to the other.
It wasn't obvious on those plans. Well, it's hard to read them anyway because they're so small. Shrink them down, but you can walk around.
You can walk from from the north side to the south side.
South side, yeah. And Bruce, are there any other town agencies that have to approve this? Like Fire, is the Fire Marshal approved it?
The Fire Marshal and the Building Inspector both. Are they both reviewed this in terms of staff review for the site plan aspect of it? And they they had no issues with the proposal as proposed right now. Final approval for building permit and fire does come at the building permits. When more detailed instruction lands.
All right, okay. Has the applicant seen the proposed motion?
Yes, we've seen, we've seen it. We got it today.
You have any problems with it?
No.
Does anyone else on the commission have anything else? To comment on, or any, does anyone on the commission have any problems with the proposed motion?
I do not.
Okay, so then I'll make a motion then to approve site plan twenty-one. Dash twenty Factory Square Restaurant Edition, twelve Water Street with the following modifications. One, that the use of outdoor patio and covered portion of the outdoor patio shall be limited to the hours of. Seven AM to ten PM. Two, the owner of the restaurant shall participate in a parking validation program. Signs shall be posted at the entrances, cash registers, menus in it, all outdoor seating areas to notify customers. Of participation in the parking validation program. Evidence of participation must be provided annually to the Office of Planning and Development Services. Three, the design engineer shall certify the stormwater system has been constructed. For the approved plan prior to the issuance of a certificate of site plan compliance. Four, that the permanent payable payment material shall be installed and maintained. In accordance with the manufacturer's specifications. Five technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, a discussion on the on the motion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve site plan twenty-one dash twenty. Factory Square, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. And I'll make a motion to approve the coastal site plan application for SIT twenty dash twenty. Based upon the following findings and conditions. The commission hereby finds that the application is modified, is consistent with all applicable goals and policies. Of CGS twenty-two A dash ninety-two. And incorporates all reasonable measures which would mitigate adverse impacts of the proposed activity on both coastal resources. And on existing and future water dependent activities. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, then we'll vote on approval of the CAM for SIT twenty dash twenty. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. We appreciate your time.
Good luck with another restaurant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good luck. It sounds like a good application. No old business, no business. We have short-term rentals. I don't know if staff wants to make any comments on this.
No, I think I'd like to hear what the commission. What their thoughts are with regards to the ordinance and the way the council has has developed it and then I can fill in. I can, I can answer questions and then maybe give some history regarding the zoning interpretation of the regs.
Okay. So I. Can open it up to the commission. Do you want to say something, Sue, or?
Sure, Michael, I didn't, I didn't want to take.
Or Michael, you want Michael to speak first?
Yeah, well, he was first in our conversation. He was first at the public hearing, too.
Well, if you want to start then, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I. I'm very troubled by this entire. Ordinance. Three things I'd like to discuss is the process, the ordinance itself and. Maybe what the next step is, but. To have a an ordinance like this that, from my point of view, entirely undermines. The zoning regulations by allowing a use, a land use over the entire town. As a blunt force object where we work so hard to fine tune. The 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 our regulations and the places where they're implemented. I'm I'm beyond being, I'm 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 sorry, but I'm upset. This is troubling. We were never consulted. We weren't given notice. We weren't CC'd on this ordinance. We weren't represented in the working group. There were zoning members, apparently from this, from the person who spoke, Tom Bratton. That there was people there from Noank. And then to have this ordinance put forth that, to me, when I read it, is so poorly written, it's embarrassing. I it's embarrassing to read this thing. I don't know if you've all have read it, but. The definitions are ridiculous. They describe. The the short-term rental. These things should be laid right next to hotel motel, short-term rental. Whatever it is, so that a person looking at them can look at what a hotel is. I I feel like by going through this thing, I'm giving it legitimacy. But but I don't see the difference between the hotel motel and these short-term rentals by the definitions. They're vague, to say the least. You and and one, you call a person a renter, and the other one, they're called a transient, a general public. Their guests is what they are. The enforcement in this ordinance is is unworkable. There are some, there are things in here that talk about two people to a bedroom. And that the person who's running this place is gonna have to call the police. That's that's the enforcement mechanism. And then the policeman shows up and he's gotta wait an hour. And then he's gotta check the bedroom to see if there's two people in it. I don't know. You have a. Five items that are listed that a person has to submit to to register. Your name, your address, and your phone number, the first three. The punishment, if you don't do that, is to send the person a letter to the person who didn't send you their name or address. I don't, I don't, I don't get it. I don't know how this was ever even submitted to the town council. It's outrageous. And to think that it's going back to them with the new council for them to consider it again. I I believe that this commission should take a stand on this and that we should be consulted and participate in this. Sorry if I sound like I'm upset, I am. But I think that we should make a statement to the town council and. Take charge because apparently whoever is in charge of this is is running roughshod over our town, as far as I'm concerned. I'm gonna leave it at that. Sorry, I don't mean to be so loud, but. It's upsetting to me. Thank you.
I guess I agree with really what Michael has said. As he also said, I think the public comments regarding the proposed short-term rental ordinance. At the November third Town Council meeting are well worth listening to. There are so many people from all over town that have really awful stories to tell. And some, of course, that are supportive. It is a mixed response, but I think. There was far more negative than positive. And I will not, I'll spare you from hearing the what I read at that meeting again tonight, but. I'm hoping you do listen to that. For me, I I also kind of feel like. This has been, well, it was a surprise it was even being considered at the town council level. And I know the town has been aware of zoning violations related to the main issue of short-term rentals for some time. And it is a complex issue which affects residents, taxpaying residents, and taxpaying businesses in town. I think the latter, these large commercial businesses, hotels, really. The Marriott, you name it, seem to have been put at a distinct disadvantage and. I think it'd be interesting to know the financial benefits to the town from the numerous hotels we have here. Versus the financial benefits we've received from Airbnb or other large, large corporations owned STRs. The LLCs, these ones we haven't even heard of that span a lot of the country. And that's to say nothing of the impact on people who live here, try to live in a residential neighborhood. Although the impact on housing prices and availability of housing stock. I think one thing I like to say, and I've said this before in other cases, but. Last Wednesday's public hearing was not well publicized. We may very well go and put notice in the paper. But I think in this case in particular, and in others too, we should make sure we're reaching people and businesses. Who are affected. In this case, it's the whole town. People just having known about it, and then when they hear about it, they're outraged. And the only people that seem to know about it are those who experience their own neighborhood. All of a sudden, they have a corporation owning houses around them. They're seeing all these people come and go, the noise, all that stuff we've heard of. I don't think, I mean, I was surprised at the ordinance. I also think it's extremely weak. I think there's a lot more research on this that shows short-term rentals. Really are, can be a very large negative. I think we have to be very careful. That what we end up here is the right thing. And I think the process has to be to go through planning and zoning. The town councils, I was familiar with these regulations as we are. We're the volunteers, we're supposed to be doing this. And for the life of me, I don't understand why the process moved in the direction it has. Why hasn't it come here? Excuse me. And when we get the package of things to look at for this issue. There are other things out there that I think do a pretty good analysis of some of the real issues of it. And I think we ought to take the time to look at all sides on this issue. So anyway, I guess, second to what Michael says, I think we should take our time. This should be carefully looked at by planning and zoning. And we should get a lot more input from the public. That was just one public hearing. So I'd like to hear from more people now that the word's getting out. It was funny, a friend of mine lives in Noank, you know, they're very proud of what they did for STRs. I said, yeah, that's great. So I went and looked as if I wanted to rent something in Noank. And you can't believe how many STRs came up that would be totally illegal under their new regulations. It was just kind of funny. I mean, it was funny, it's not funny. It's just showing, I think, that this is a very widespread issue. And we have to be very careful if and how we want to regulate it. Okay, that's all I have to say for now. Thanks.
Does anyone else on the commission have anything to comment? Deb, do you have something to say?
One more thing. I do too. I have, I have one thing as well. No, no, my point is, I think, and I haven't been here as long as as many of you. And I respect your opinions in all cases. And since my time on this commission, there's been contentious issues. Which I think this commission has stayed well within, you know, the swim lanes of our mission. And you can point to a couple of the big contentious issues where I think, you know, this commission has done a great job. What I find in this particular issue, and it's not a legal issue for the moment because I don't fully understand it, and you all may better. But it appears to me, and Tom, I thought was articulate this evening as citizen in laying it out. Is this is very much against what our zoning regulations are. It's like if I was in the federal government where I worked for thirty-five years with them. And I've broken a federal acquisition regulation, it's not gray, it is black and white. And for the moment, it appears as it's laid out, the STRs are in a violation of what the zoning is. Understand it's gray, but it's violation. And my only other point, Mr. Chair, is on the ordinance. Because again, my background is in technical writing and definitions and federal acquisition regulations. This has no precision. The ordinance is the least precise document I've read coming out of a town. Or a federal government in my life. There's no enforcement, there's no possibility for enforcement. We're dealing with a different type of business person here, and the fact is, they are outside the boundaries would appear to me to be zoning. And the ordinance is nowhere near captures the thoughts of our citizenry in the town of Groton. That's it. Thank you.
You had something else to add, Mike?
No, I just wanted to, I I believe that that this is workable, whatever it is, that we can figure it out. Can, is there some way that we can? I don't know what. I I want to prevent the town council from from acting on this. Can we? As a group, write a recommendation that isn't even requested or. Or have another conversation where everybody, you know, I don't know what, I think that we need to do something and then I think we need to either. Among ourselves as as an entire commission or form a group among ourselves with people who come up with. Some solutions and to and to make something happen. That's it. You won't hear from me again.
I chip in here?
How you heard something?
Yeah, I mean, I actually look at this and wonder if there's some, I I agreed with Kevin too. This document is bizarre. And and having penalties of having a third offense within a twelve-month period of two hundred and fifty dollars worth of rent. If we're talking corporations buying it, that's be the cost of doing business. Why would they bother doing any different? Every aspect is bizarre in this thing. But perhaps the idea is that it might be a hybrid solution. It absolutely should be, have to do with this. You're right, it starts out that our our documents say it's not allowed, so it's not allowed. Now, you want to make it allowed, then we have to change things to be allowed. And I think we probably could come up with some way of regulating it and tightening it up. And not just being having having owner occupied. I mean, when these first came out. I think the idea was you have a spare bedroom, you can rent it out. I don't think anybody had a problem with that. You're gonna be in the one bedroom, your renter will be in the other bedroom. If you've got a a a. An in-law apartment, maybe you could rent that out. You're gonna be living next door. That was, that was the thought process. Not that you'd have a corporation buying a place and then renting it out. That has nothing to do with it. I completely agree with an earlier commenter, that's a hotel. And needs to be called that, and you can't have that in this town. We're just not permitting that. In terms of the penalties, well, we can't do penalties per se. We can say it's allowed or not allowed. So maybe it is a hybrid approach. And there should be a regulation.
So maybe it is a hybrid approach, and there should be a, a regulation that says, this is what it is. And in this particular case, the penalties are financial and immediate that we can't do. So maybe there is a two-pronged approach to it. We can come up with an actual document that we can actually say who can do what for real. And then also have the town council vote on something that inflicts a penalty that would actually stop it from happening.
Oh, and, and how that also eliminates the grandfathering problem.
Right.
If, if the ordinance were, were written with the zoning regulation in hand, I mean, we certainly couldn't dictate that, but if, if we could hope to influence it by having a zoning regulation and then an ordinance which would follow, that would have some, have some teeth then, and the grandfathering.
Right. But I think we also need to figure out, because hotels do pay certain things. I mean, sometimes there'll be a room tax or tax for being in a town or whatever, whatever our particular structure is. But people running us out of, you know, their whatever homes should also be subject to that too. It just isn't fair for all of a sudden these corporations to come in. And I, I would, I'd be surprised if they paid much at all to support the local economy. I don't know, but I hope to ask some questions in the meantime. I have a long list and better understand this whole issue myself.
Well, still pay property tax. I mean, that's probably what they're saying.
No, but there's a lot in addition to that.
A hotel.
Way more than, it should be way more than that though. Correct. I agree.
I'm concerned that whatever regulations we put in, that there would be a problem with pre-existing use.
Well, I think we can get around that with doing it with zoning. I think.
With an ordinance. Would follow.
That's why you need the ordinance. But also, why aren't they defined as, as a hotel? I mean, what's the difference between?
Can I, can I jump in here?
Go ahead.
Thanks. So, so in your packet, I also had included the, the white paper that the COG produced in two thousand and nineteen, which lays out the difference between zoning regulations and, and ordinances. And as, as you guys have, as you guys know, a zoning regulation, from the time it's effective, it only regulates new uses. So you're right, if you adopted a regulation that, you know, banned or regulated in some fashion, short-term rentals, it would only apply to new short-term rentals. All the ones that exist now would be grandfathered, right? So that's why the town council took up the idea of doing an ordinance. Because an ordinance looks backwards and forwards, so it would impact those short-term rentals that exist now. I think you heard that there was, the mayor convened a task force group or a, as a sort of a group to tackle this problem. I know no one from OPDS was there, so, so the direction that, that the director was given was basically from the town council. So that, that's all I can say on that. I also want to just point out, a, a number of you have said that, well, you know, short-term rentals are just not allowed. On two occasions, two different zoning officials have determined that they are not regulated by these, by our zoning regulations. That, that the zoning regulations do not tell people who they can rent their homes to. So, so they made that determination, and that's what, what, what we've been going by is the zoning official's interpretation of the zoning regulations. The remedy for that, if someone disagrees with that, is to take that case to the zoning board of appeals. But, but that being said, we, the zoning official, the planners, anytime someone calls up and says, okay, I'm thinking about doing a short-term rental. Do you have any regulations? The answer is no, we don't. So, so that's part of the issue, that zoning official has determined that these things are residential houses, and they're allowed, that use is allowed. Which is, again, is why an ordinance probably can address this better and more efficiently than, than a zoning regulation.
Deb, I think that we need to change the zoning regulation then.
Yeah.
And make it very clear what these are and how they're being used. And I, I would say that we could start with the definitions because, because that's telling to me. I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm gonna interrupt. That the short-term, when, when I see what a hotel is, they use words transient and general public to describe the people who are using these. When they use short-term rental, they call that same guest a renter. All we have to do is make our regulations consistent. When we had the application at, the Pfizer daycare, and they came in and told us that the Stonington Institute was a hotel. Well, we didn't think it was, and neither did the zoning official. But somebody was gonna sue and somehow convinced us and them that the Stonington Institute is a hotel. So if our deaths, if our definition of what a hotel is can be so broad as to include the Stonington Institute, we need to change our definitions. One, one thing that I've thought about that might work is what I would call a short-term, short-term rental. So it would be a rental that is rented on a short term, one week a month, as opposed to six, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Or whatever, pick a day, seven, three days a month, seven days a month. What, but it is, it makes what is a, a house in a residential area, its primary use would be residential use, not business use. Once you go past that one week period now, it is primarily being used as something other than a residence. I, I think that, that's why I think that we could work this through. I don't know, maybe I'm out of whack.
No, but just, just keep in mind that, that, as I said before, that regulation would only apply for new, to new uses.
Well, that's why I think that we need to also couple it.
With an ordinance.
I, I agree. They, they both need to mesh. You're absolutely right. Complement each other. That's right. That's right. And my understanding is that.
Sunday night staring at the ceiling, wide awake to think of it.
I, I think, I think the town council is going back to the drawing board on this. So I.
Are they going to work with us though?
I know, that's fine. I listened to it a little bit, but yeah, it, it, a number of them said, we need to work with the planning and zoning commission.
Right. Well, after, I would hope so after that hearing. But I, I think what was clear too was the problem for a lot of people is if I give corporations now in your neighborhood, and that's a whole different animal from somebody renting out a room in a house, you know? Which I think we've, we've pretty well covered in the zoning regulations, renting out a room or something. But not having, you know, corporations come in and have the, the door, you know, revolving door and everything.
Corporations are peoples too, don't you remember that?
Yes, they are.
That may be something that they, they consider. They may, they may say that, you know, any, any short-term rental has to have an owner in the house. You can't rent out the, that's one off.
Well, and I think another thought was maybe restricted to certain districts in town too. Do we really need it in the northern part of town? Although I, it's amazing how widespread.
Who will? He will. It'll be in St. and Groton.
It'll be in every neighborhood in the town, which is why this, this is, to do it this way initially is, that is put, once again, put in the cart in front of the horse, not the way to do it.
I agree with that, but.
Well, should, Deb, should we write a letter to the town council and request that we have set up a meeting with them, the planning commission and the council or?
Sure. Sure.
To, to discuss this issue?
Or should we wait? The new council maybe? Because I think.
Well, it goes to the town council, it would stay on their, their agenda, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a really good idea to just, you know, offer your help in, in developing any ordinance and making sure that it's consistent with the zoning regulations. You know, I can wait until after next week to send it so that new council actually gets it.
Right. Yeah. Just because I think they made it clear they wanted to defer it till the next council.
Well, obviously, they aren't gonna act on it. Yeah, it has to be to the next council.
Yeah. Well, now.
If you may, if you use the US mail with all the slowdowns, it will, we put it in today, they'll get it after.
Put it on a ship, Deb. So I think that's a great, that's a great idea. I think Jeff, that, that's a terrific idea. It's not a volley across the bow, but it's, it's a handshake that says, this collaboration needs to be terrific. We have got to be in that game with you. And I think that's the tone of the letter.
They'll have to, yeah, they have to be done together.
Good. All right. Good. That's a way to do it.
And then we can form some sort of a group or something, or all of us working together. I think that. Brainstorming effort.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think it's better to have at least input from a lot more people.
Yeah, no, I agree. I, I enjoy having a, a big group that we have.
We're a pretty small group. I mean. Five plus parts and alternates.
No, I think probably that, that, all of us thinking together is the best course, I would say.
Yeah, because I think these things started out as you'd rent some, you'd own a place you use on yourself, by yourself, and then you could rent it out on a part-time basis. Now it's become renting out on a full-time basis and buying a place just for that purpose.
Well, and yeah, no, absolutely. And that's.
Or building a place just for that.
Well, that's it. Yeah, no doubt. No, you, what would stop someone from doing exactly that?
They are doing that. I think that no place they, they built off a New London Road was put in there just for that purpose. They built the building for. All right. So we can do that. I don't know who the, should I sign that letter or you did?
Yep, I will draft something up and forward it over to you. Yeah.
Yeah, well, probably if it comes from the commission.
Yeah, comes from the commission.
Yep.
Should come from the commission and not from staff.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Now, who, now who writes it? Just so it sounds like that's where it comes from. All right.
We want to keep this on the agenda or put it on the agenda again. Maybe people want to think of things and we can, you know, what their thoughts are, what the problems are, identify them, and maybe come up with some.
Add it to all business for next time.
Yeah, I would like to, you know, maybe just like on a bi-week, you know, every two weeks, we just have a conversation as to what we're thinking and, and start observing what we see and talking to people about this and learning about it, reading about it. There's an awful lot of information out there of other communities that are struggling with these issues, how to control it. You know, the thing is, is that a lot of the things that, it, it's right in the SCOG report. I don't know why the people who wrote this didn't read it. It creates parking problems. It, it creates issues with, you know, enforcement. Do the police really want to be doing this? I don't, I don't.
Yeah, it's brought up at the original planning commission by the rural, actually the rural towns. Are concerned with this. It's not.
You know, this, this ordinance in here said there was supposed to be smoke detectors. We have a building code. Why didn't they reference that?
It also says we have a town-wide garbage system, collection system, which we don't. All right, so.
Anyway. Thank you.
Okay. New applications? Do we have any new applications then?
No, we don't have any new ones.
And no referrals. Okay. Reporter chair, the only thing I have is you sign the days in conversion to apartments, drawings, slightly signed. And in previous years, we've had a Christmas party. I don't know if we're interested in doing that again. So we don't have to wear masks anymore. If people are interested in that.
I think it would be nice. I enjoyed it.
Yeah.
I sat across from Kevin the last time. I think it was his first week on the commission or.
Yeah.
Very quickly.
I was a little, I was a little weak there, Mike. So I think it's a great idea.
Have one in December. I don't know if staff can come, but. All right, I didn't have anything else. Does anyone on the commission have anything to report?
I'd like to again commend the staff for the Blight report. Must, must read, reading there. I'm, I appreciate the work that's been done, the cases that have been closed. And I see that, that several of the properties that I was concerned about are being addressed, and, and I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Report of staff?
So I have a couple of things. First of all, Diane is going to be retiring the first of the year. So we will miss her expertise.
Oh my god.
She's too young.
No, right? We, seriously, we tried. Yeah, she's been with us twenty-one years now.
Really? Wow.
Just warming up.
Yeah. So the December meeting is going to be a really packed agenda. So just putting that on your radar, we've got two public hearings, six site plans. We will, may have some referrals, so just plan for a long night. That's probably not the night you want to do the Christmas.
Oh, I wasn't gonna do that. I was thinking of separate. That's what we've done the last times is do it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep.
Because it can be too long.
Exactly. And then I, with the, with the mask mandate going, we may be back in person the first of the year. So we'll. I hope so, anyway.
Is there too much to put on that December meeting, Deb, or?
It is, but it's, it's a number of them that are coming up on the deadline, so.
Should we, no, should we have a special meeting to cover that or?
So what, the meeting is December fourteenth, so that's pretty far into the month.
Do it early. Yeah, that's too late.
Except that we've, we've been telling people, we've been giving them deadlines in order to get on the December fourteenth agenda, so moving it up a bit probably wouldn't work.
Yeah, all right. Okay.
I'm probably not going to put short-term rentals on that.
Well, I don't think, yeah.
Whose idea was it to combine the planning and zoning commissions?
That was start of the, the.
Not mine.
Was town council.
It was a town council?
Yeah.
And they wouldn't listen to anybody.
And I could name names, but I won't.
Always best not to.
Anything else, Deb?
I don't have anything else. Do you, Bruce?
No, I don't have anything else, Deb.
All right. Now we have the October ASP report. So I figured a, a little garage is now a big barn now.
Yeah, yeah.
I wondered what they were doing there. Turned into be a small, small places populated, I guess. All right. Then we have the Connecticut Federation Quality Newsletter. I assume everybody read some interesting faces.
Yeah, yeah. One involving short-term rentals, working through federal court, so yeah.
And the Blight update. Does anyone have anything else to, otherwise we can move to adjourn? No one has anything else, so I'll make a motion for adjournment. Is there a second? Move in second.
All right.
We have only two items on the agenda tonight. We had a long meeting.
You have to listen to me.
I have to have Clint Brown trained on Zoom now.
He has his microphone, right?
It does my heart good to know that an. It does my heart good to know that an engineer can't figure this out and I can't.
User interface. It's not about, you know, their tenures and stuff.
Wrong, wrong kind of engineer anyway.
That's right, Al.
That's probably the last time you're gonna see, well, you can really see him, but Clint Brown is also retiring at the end of the year.
Oh, really? Wow.
All right.
I have new faces. That's gonna be tough. I'll miss him.
Well, good night, everybody.
Thanks.